Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to this session, this study session of the Parking Initiative. We're going to start this meeting, I call this meeting to order, this Monday, September 23rd. If you have any comments, please feel free to fill out a speaker card. I will ask, I'm inviting, actually, you all to have a say in today's meeting. So I've already gotten several, so I encourage you to, if you haven't, complete a speaker card, so we can hear from you later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so first up, we're going to talk about the Parking Initiative, and who's going to start us off? Go ahead, Ms. Ramon Wilson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. On June 24, 2019, an initial study session on parking was held. Tonight, we will continue to brainstorm on proposed next steps, and will provide updates since the initial study session, discuss community outreach options, and review proposed updated action timeline. To ensure the city's parking issues are thoroughly assessed, the city has convened an internal, interdepartmental team to staff the Parking Initiative. This team includes representatives from the City Manager's Office, Police, Public Works, Finance, and Economic and Community Development. These departments are responsible for many of the issues related to parking, such as policy development, enforcement, street and sidewalk infrastructure, and housing development. Since the first study session, this team has continued to research parking challenges. Public Works initiated a red tips at driveway survey in the month of August to a list of 1,274 residents who had red tips painted under a past program or previously expressed interest in red tips. Prior to 2009, Public Works would paint red tips upon requests, but currently, the city does not offer this service, although four other cities in San Mateo County do. The survey solicited feedback regarding support for the program, costs, and ongoing maintenance. Staff received 246 survey responses, and 83% expressed interest in reviving the red tip program, although concern was expressed over potential program cost. Public Works also mailed a McDonald Avenue parking survey to residents and businesses to solicit input on changing the parking configuration from parallel to perpendicular, which would effectively double the amount of spaces. This survey just closed this past Friday, September 20th, and the Traffic Safety Committee is still currently reviewing the responses. The Police and Finance Departments are conducting a review of the full suite of vehicle code and municipal code fines related to parking violations in comparison to neighborhood cities in the county, as well as San Francisco. Initial study results show that updating daily city fines for better alignment with the region's average fine rates could potentially generate over 870,000 in additional revenue based on citations that were issued in fiscal year 2018-19. When complete, the study will be presented to council as part of a comprehensive update to the city's fines. And now, I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Okay, so we want to discuss our community engagement process for the Parking Initiative, and just as a reminder, this is a duplicate slide from last time. We do have a dual purpose with our outreach, and it is to educate our residents on existing regulations, and then also to gather their feedback and match solutions to very specific areas. So, we are recommending that the Parking Initiative utilize two forms of outreach, one will be online, and the other will be in person. So I'll walk you through both of them. The goal is just to reach the broadest audience possible, and the first portion, or Phase One of Outreach, will be the online portion. And I'm really excited about this one, because we identified a company called Social Pinpoint that provides pinnable mapping software, and what we can do is parse the city out into those six geographic regions that have unique challenges in terms of parking, and then residents, businesses can log on and drop a comment in the form of a pin on a specific intersection or street, and then they can also, at the same time, respond to a list of online survey questions, which will be right there on the same page as the map on the left as a sidebar. So it's like a one-stop-shop online for people to log on and give us their comments. And we will be soliciting feedback on the challenges, but also their ideas for solutions, because we really do want to play that matching game with solutions to location. Social Pinpoint has been used by the city in the past, most recently for our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, and it was super successful. Over 700 comments were received, so that's pretty good in terms of online outreach. This is an image of what the mapping software would look like. Now, the Walk-Bike Daily City Outreach Program has concluded, so this is a snapshot of like kind of all the comments we received, and that's kind of how it will look. So this will run for a good, I think we can get a good two months of data collected with the online portion, if we start this fall, and then we can move into the in-person phase of outreach. And what I like about staggering it is we can use the initial findings from the mapping and the online survey and validate them in person at the meetings. It gives us something to work off of. We use that form of outreach or that style with our Parks and Open Space Master Plan, where we had different phases, and you're constantly validating and revalidating results throughout the process, so. And then that, so it will open maybe October, and then it will run through the entire course of our outreach, which will end around March. So we can still receive comments online, even though we're kicking off the in-person part starting in January, in the form of neighborhood forums. These are the in-person meetings, they'll be facilitated by a really great group that's here tonight, and I will introduce them in a second, but it's the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, or PCRC. They've been working in the county for over 30 years on conflict resolution and engagement, and the support they're going to provide is really valuable. It's in language, they're proposing childcare for the meetings, and they're even going to help out with marketing and outreach on the ground. They have a good network of partners right here in Daly City to help us really boost the attendance at these forums. Just another thing to point out, we are partnering with the Police Department for these forums, because we do want a strong education piece to be present, so they'll be talking about their enforcement, the existing regulations, and how people can report parking violations as well. But Public Works is also going to play a big role, and they'll be there as well, in addition to the City Manager's Office. Just as a reminder, these are the six focus areas we broke out last time, and it was just based on the nature of complaints we received from them. And the schedule will be two meetings per month, January to March. We selected Wednesday and Thursday evenings from about 7:00 to 9:00, because just historically, that's kind of when attendance is greatest during the week at these types of events. And we're starting a little later at 7:00 to just accommodate work schedules. PCRC will be there. These are the locations for each of our geographic areas. The only two non-city facilities are Panorama Elementary and Westmore High School. We don't have a city facility out in Southern Hills or St. Francis. Been in touch with both of those schools already. I don't have dates just yet, because it's actually too early to start scheduling, so later this fall, we'll make that available, and then we'll really push it out in our marketing. All locations can accommodate over 100 people. So I do want to call up two of our partners at the PCRC. One is Debbie Schechter, she's the Manager of Facilitation Services, and then Melissa Natani, she's Managing Director of Initiatives and Services, and they're just going to give you a little background on their work here in the peninsula, and what they can help us do for the Parking Initiative.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. Hello, Mayor, Council Members, and all of the residents here today. My name is Melissa Natani-Jones. I am the Managing Director of Initiatives and Services, and I oversee all of the programs at the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. Thank you to Stephen for the introduction. As he mentioned, we are a nonprofit organization that has been serving San Mateo County for over 30 years, and we are a dispute and communications organization. And our job is to really help elevate the voice of the community, and which is relevant for what we've been assigned to do tonight, which is to, again, bring residents to the forefront to be able to understand the process and to get input. And we've been doing this work throughout the county. We've worked with several city municipalities around engaging communities to provide input and suggestions around different things that the cities are doing, such as general plans, parking, trees, name it, the whole gamut of things. PCRC facilitates these meetings, as well as does the outreach. In Daly City in particular, we've been working with the city, excuse me, the school districts. We also partner with the County Office of Diversity and Equity in providing parent project classes. We also have a mediation service that we provide to the city of Daly City, which we've been having contract with the city of Daly City for almost over 15 years. And so our work is really focused on being able to reach communities or the populations that aren't always active in these types of meetings. So our jobs to really go out and do outreach, partner with different organizations, families, faith leaders, to be able to engage all of those that participate in those different organizations, to be able to bring them to participate in meetings. I'm going to turn the time over.
Hi, thanks, Melissa. I'm Debbie Schechter, Services for PCRC. So what I do is I partner with a lot of local governments like yourselves to help them plan and run community meetings, as Melissa said. We've recently done a lot of meetings around housing, general plan updates. We've led task forces on renter protection issues and heritage tree ordinances, and our goal in those meetings really is to create a safe environment for residents to come and express their views, and not only that, but to learn from each other, to learn about the different perspectives in the community. And we really specialize in creating a safe, welcoming environment where people feel comfortable expressing their ideas. We do that through a lot of small group engagement in meetings rather than the large town hall. And then also, we will take the notes, we will transcribe them, we'll present them in a report, and give you some analysis and recommendations. So that's basically what we can do for you, and we look forward to the opportunity to work with you all.
Can I just also want to say that I recognize that Daly City has a lot of great things that are up and coming, and PCRC is really interested in being a part of that. We also know that we're a very unique city, and we want to be able to meet community members where they are, to be able, there is a process to community engagement, and we can apply the same thing that we do in other cities here in Daly City. So we recognize that there is a wonderful uniqueness here, and we're excited to work with the city in order to be able to engage all the community members to provide their input and to be a part of the conversation, because we know that it impacts everyone.
So, let me see, I don't know who thought of that idea to bring you folks in, but this is an incredible, incredible idea, because this issue is a very volatile issue, and we tried this before, it didn't work, but to bring in folks like you from the outset, I think is incredibly needed, and we are starting off the right way, by having you folks come in and help facilitate, and recognizing at the outset how volatile this issue is, and how much help we do need to bring folks together and get an understanding of where they're coming from, and maybe help sort out the differences, and come to a manageable solution. So, I applaud that you are here, I'm going to thank the City Manager for having the foresight, for bringing that kind of thought and progressiveness to this discussion, and so, you're welcome, and thank you for coming. So, let's go.
So, really, what we're hoping for tonight is to get your okay to move forward with this plan, and then we'll hit the ground running and start on that mapping software. There is a, I think the timeline might be next, yeah.
So we just wanted to review the timeline. As we said, in June, we had the initial study session. Today, we are having the continued study session, and as Stephen expressed, October through March of 2020, we're going to launch the online outreach with the survey and pinnable map, and then come April and May of 2020, we want to report back to the City Council, discuss potentially convening a task force, and then in June 2020, begin implementation of solutions identified through the public process.
And just in regards to the task force, the more we thought about it, the more we don't know yet if we really need that group, and we want to see how these neighborhood forums go. Will leaders kind of rise to the surface? Will they be really interested in participating in something more than the forum? So we have it in PCRC's contract as a possibility, we just don't have anything scheduled for the task force just yet, so I think maybe we can check in on that around February.
Is the plan to, I mean, I get, I get the part about we need the input from the community, but at the same time, are you going to be suggesting solutions for them to discuss amongst themselves?
Yeah, definitely. I don't think we just want to leave it open without any context, just because most of our residents don't work in transportation planning and parking stuff, so we'll definitely have a suite of solutions to kind of pick from and match. And in conversations with Debbie, you know, their engagement practices are really modern, and it's stuff I've seen at other meetings, where there'll be boards around the room or stations, and people can assign colored post-its or dots or whatever to different ideas and solutions. So, yeah, we'll be working with Public Works in particular, and the Police Department on having at least an initial set of solutions identified, and some of them are things like establishing a residential parking zone in your neighborhood, and then others might be around enforcement, but yeah, we'll have something to go on.
Excellent, okay. Thank you. Anything else, or should we bring the public in? Okay, so I have several speaker cards, let me just announce them in order, so you can be ready when you're called up. I have Ray Keenan, Morgan Emly, Donna Burney, Marian Sekai, Michael Prezvelski, Barbara Krevash, and Chris Martin. So let me start with Ray. Ray, Ray Keenan, come on up.
The Daly City Council and Mayor, and City Manager. In our area where we are, there are schools, all the way around the school, which is good at times, but what we have in our area, we have, one person has at least seven Priuses that they lease out, to use them as some other, I guess, for this new companies, or I guess they ain't new anymore, or Uber or them. And then we have a couple, about three trucks that are oversized, and all the rest of that pick up trash, which I think is the most marvelous thing there is, that these people go around and pick up stuff instead of letting them on the street. But they should have to park underneath the overpasses like everybody else, okay? And then we have a few, a couple places that people actually parked their trucks out in front, a different thing, and put covers on them, and leave them there for, and another thing is that this three-day, I mean, three, for a person to call in for three days and say a car's been overparked, that doesn't work, because the time the police get out there, and they give them three days, the seven days are up, and they're only going to move them across the street anyhow. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keenan. I have Morgan Emly. Oh, Sharon, I got your card, thanks.
Good evening. Why, Parking Initiative is great, but this council, as well as council support, have created this problem. They have allowed parking to go unchecked. Now, if I can park on the sidewalk, suddenly someone else sees I park on the sidewalk, then someone else sees it. You've got, in one section of Daly City over there on, it's either on Santa Barbara or Miriam, you've got at any one given time, eight vehicles parked in a line on the sidewalk. There are laws that the councils have enacted, the ordinances, I take it back, there are state laws, but none of these seem to be followed. We are told, they're told to look the other way, the PAs are told to look the other way. They seem to have no, you seem to have no problem enforcing parking regulations on street cleaning days, but you seem to have a terrible problem enforcing other types of parking violations. Daly City is trying to become a welcoming city, is that correct? Daly City is also trying to become a senior-friendly. You cannot have these sidewalks impassable and hope to get that kind of recognition. In fact, some of those things are part of being recognized. There is absolutely no reason that the existing laws and ordinances cannot be enforced, none whatsoever. And I feel this council needs to direct the City Manager, and the City Manager needs to direct the Police Department to enforce the laws that are on the books. Otherwise, just take them off the books. If you're not going to enforce them, what do we need them there for? It's not, you know, I'm not picking on a particular problem that affects me. This affects all of us. It reduces our quality of life in this city. It creates health hazards, and all that, all of us have to do is do our jobs, the jobs you were elected to do, the jobs people were hired to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Emly. Sharon Keenan.
Honorable Mayor, City Councils, City Manager. It sounds to me that you've been trying to plan things out pretty good, but we're not alone. San Bruno is having the same problem that we are having, and there are several things that I included in that note that I picked up from San Bruno when they were talking on it. One thing that you don't have is, like they said, we are a community of senior people, and they all have caregivers that come to take care of them. They can't come out like every two, three hours and move their car while they're taking care of that person, and they're not allowed to have any kind of a sticker saying, "I am a caregiver," so they get tickets. So, I wish you would keep it in mind that there are exceptions to the rule on it when you do it, and I think that I've covered pretty much in my notes to you, things that I picked up from other cities and that, that maybe we could implement. The only bad thing about it is we have to, if you're going to have parking tags and that, we have to figure out how we're going to use them, and what we're going to charge for them, because most people cannot charge what San Bruno wants to charge for it. So it has to be a reasonable charge for them to do it, and the cars, if you allow them, say you allow them three cars, those three cars should have a licensed driver for that car, because a lot of people have a car, and then a luxury car, and then an entertainment car. It all takes up spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Donna Burney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Another complaint, but anyway, I live, the way I, where I live, it's one block long, and then there's a street coming down, it ends at my house. So on one side of the street that comes down, there are two houses on that side, and on the other, there are two more, then one up the street next to it. Well, the owners don't live there, and they made them all into rooms, so there's like 20 to 25 cars that park in the neighborhood, and it's terrible. So I just hope and pray that maybe you'll get some kind of permits or whatever, I don't care, because it, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burney. Marian Sekai?
Seki.
Seki.
I want to commend you first for having this in an outline. I've been to so many meetings. My question always is, what is the value of our voices? What is the value of our input? I appreciate that they're going to have all these meetings, they're going to take notes, they're going to list, they're going to give you a report of recommendations that came out of all our meetings. What do you do with it? What is the value of our voice? Do we have a vote? I see your council is made up Police Department, City Manager, you people, but where's our voice? Do we get to be a community, are we going to, are you going to form a task force of just residents, so that we are truly represented? We're going to be represented in reports, and you're going to read it, but are they valued, other than you just read them and look at them? That's my concern. I've been on so many meetings, I've seen the charts, I've seen the dots, I've seen everything, and then it just goes into a pile, and then you guys do whatever you want to do, and I go, what's, what's the purpose of having these meetings? If our voice isn't valued, I would like the task force to be part of your task force, made up of, you've got six communities, Westmore, Dozier, I can't, we have one member from each of those six units to be part of yours, and have an equal voice, so that we truly feel represented. I really feel that we need to be truly represented. And then if you do go, you know, resident stickers, it should only be two per household, and it should only go to the owner, like Donna said. They rent the house, you got eight people, that is a continuing revolving door. Why should those eight people get a sticker? It should only be allowed to the owner of the house. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Prezvelski?
Close enough.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, well, it's nice to see somebody's getting paid to sit up here and do, I don't know what, but I haven't, all these years, I haven't seen anything significant happen with parking in Daly City. Marshbanks Park and all the areas around there just increase in building, new buildings, increasing the population in each house, and having large, large groups of people. I don't give a damn what it, that more people have to live in a house to pay the mortgage. That's not our problem. Our problem is the streets haven't kept up with it, and so we can't, we don't have the parking. And in Venice, they only allow two. Two parking permits, kind of like, like the things you hang on your thing for handicap, and you can trade it, but you only get two. And that's, you know, that would maximize everything. Anybody else is in violation. It's a simple process, it simplifies it for the city, and everybody can get along. We have people owning six and seven cars, and rotating them around on street cleaning, okay? And I don't know if anybody gets tickets, I don't know what's going on, but I know that if you ask, if you called up right now, and you ask the Police Department, hey, they're blocking my garage, I can't get out, because they've got big vehicles, nothing's going to happen, okay? We really need to have the red lines parked on either side of garages, so that, and stamped with the Daly City Police Department logo, and we need it right away. Now, I've done painting all my life, I know it doesn't cost $50, $400 to paint one person's house, okay, a small tiny strip that's 18 inches to two feet on either side, okay? And if you collectively do, I don't know, every house on the block, or everybody wants on the block, it's not going to cost you much for your painter or your paint, you know, and if you said like, all right, we got 50 people on the block, we want to charge them all $400, you know, a piece for that, it's absurdity. And it can be all done in one day, come on. And, you know, the whole thing is that you just got through painting everything I could see with brand-new red paint, and stamping your stamps on them. Everything out here, you guys aren't blind, I know you aren't, and you see it, and you had it done, and you paid for it, and you commissioned it, okay? Everything here, maybe that golf course really needs it, the red zone, you know, and marks, but no time, and no money, and no effort to go and paint the ones that we need to keep people from blocking our driveways so we can get out. A lot of Daly City is very small driveways, not all the new ones with gigantic with two and four, whatever. They're small, okay? That's just the nature of Daly City. Narrow streets, too. Not, it's not the suburbs. So if you have narrow streets, and you have narrow parking and big cars, you're not going to be able to fit in there, are you? If you can't fit in there, how do you get out, in and out of your car without damaging your vehicle? And how simple it is just to put a red sign on either side, you know? And how simple it is just to put a red sign on either side, you know, and, and then be able to call the police and say, "Wait a minute, they're over my line." You know, they know it, because they're not stupid either, and they do it repetitively. Why not have that happen and keep the people from double parking and, and buying 10 cars? There's no reason for so many cars to be in a neighborhood. It can't sustain that. You know, I mean, I'm looking at this list, and it looks like the, the Rip Van Winkle of, of, of planning, because it takes so long to get anything done there. You know? I mean, you need to be trying to do something expeditiously and, 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 and get people to be able to come to one meeting and then come to another and say, "Oh, we did something." Not, "Well, goddamn, in January, we'll get it done, we'll start on it. Maybe we'll be finished in June?" Let's be realistic. That's absurd. I mean, if you ran a business that way, you'd be out of business. You know, it just, it's, it's a terrible waste of, of, of our, our precious time and our, our parking and everything else that's going on in Daly City. So I hope you guys can get something done faster than you have, and it's certainly faster than that list is going on, you know? Because I, I'm sure they, they, I'm sure they're not paying you $15 an hour to do the job. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Kukrymich?
Pretty much what you have to say. A couple of years ago, when you were talking about charging $40 for a permit, everybody, there was a crowd that went out to the street, and city council meeting ended with them saying, "We're going to have a parking summit, and you'll all be invited." "Hmm, I'm still waiting, where's this parking summit we're all invited to?" "They're going to have to hire, get a big hall," they said, "they couldn't accommodate everyone." So it's like, we're still waiting. And I see nothing wrong with limiting the number of permits per house, per address. I don't care if there are 10-bedroom homes. My neighbor next door has a two-bedroom home like mine. However, he calls everything a bedroom. The living room is a bedroom, the dining room is a bedroom, so he has like a five-bedroom home. But it's still the same number of square feet, because he has so many people living there. And then they got mad that when they went out, there wouldn't be parking left on the street, so they bought extra cars that they don't drive, just to hog spaces on the street. So you can't just let everyone have unlimited passes. I mean, bigger cities than ours, either, I said, and charge, you know, $200 for the third one, $400 for the fourth one, something to just, you know, stop people from encourage, don't encourage more people. My neighbors don't use any cars for work, and they have six. They just sit there, they move them around. And the people across, next door bought extra cars too to hog their spaces, so they just go out during the day and grab two spaces. But the placards, I think, are a good idea, and you could give it to your guests. And I don't see anything with 24-hour, that meeting two years ago, whatever it was, they said it was because of BART. Well, I'm near Marchbanks Park on John, on San Diego Avenue, and nobody parks in front of my house to go to BART unless they live on my block. So BART has, doesn't contribute to it. But at night, when everybody comes home and their friends come and, you know, someone's having a party, it's even harder to park. I have two vehicles, and I park one, I pay $200 a month to park it in Oakland. Because if I, by the time I take care of a woman who has dementia, by the time I get home on street cleaning days, you know, I've moved it here and I have to move it back on the next day, I have to find parking three, four blocks away. And it just doesn't seem fair. Sorry. So limit them 24 hours a day. You'll make lots of money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chris Martin.
Evening, Council.
Evening.
City Manager. So last time we talked about some parking issues, and you were going to look into them, and one of them was going to be commercial parking. I wonder, I wanted to know if anything happened with that. You mentioned it yourself, Mayor. The commercial parking on, was that Gellert? It's pretty bad. You drive by and you see all this junk and stuff, it looks like, beat-up vehicles and things like that. And then you got the other one on Geneva. And I looked it up, and it looked like it was supposed to be 300 feet, but it's from, it's, it's a lot more than that. And then these people come and park, they have two cars, they park their two cars where their truck is, take off in the truck, come back, put the truck where the two cars are. So I, I don't understand the commercial parking side of it, and does have anybody checking? There's been a couple big buses parked over there, older buses. Just wanted to know about that. And I don't know about the red tipping, you know, how, if that'll help or hurt, because then, in some areas, you can't put a car, you know, in between, then it's going to leave it open to those owners of the houses. I understand in some areas it's different, every area is going to have different issues. But the, the commercial parking, I'd like to have it looked at more than anything. And then the Airbnb houses, or the purpose-built houses, and their parking, and they, they take up a lot in the neighborhood. Like I said, there's one, I'm guaranteed, there's another one that just finished, I'm guaranteed, is both Airbnb. Another one that's finished, I'll say 90%. And I see plates and stuff from all over, you know, different cities, states and stuff like that. Talked to a few people that were, you know, not from around there, visiting and just taking up space. Actually, there was an incident with the Airbnb house in a neighbor. Somebody jumped onto their roof from the Airbnb house. I know that's not parking, but that has an issue with parking, because the house had a party, and there was a lot of cars, you know, that took up spaces for residents. Just if that can be looked into in some of these houses that are purpose-built, then they're going to have a lot of, I mean, it's a, what, 3,000-square-foot lot, and you've got a three-story house, you know, 4,000 square feet. It's more square feet for the house than it is the property. It's a monster house on a little lot. I mean, how can you have two cars only? It's not going to happen, there's going to be a lot more, take up a lot more space. There's more issues over there in Bay Shore. I know that hasn't got a lot of complaints, just because the people just do what we can over there, but there are some issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, those are all the speaker cards I have at this moment. Let me open up to the council to make some comments or questions. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You told me you're ready, huh?
Yeah, you're always ready.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have a few comments that I would like to make. One, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. So I'll try to make this quick. First of all, I'd like to, I have to echo the sentiments of the mayor for the city manager and staff for putting together such a great report, and how we're going to move forward on this. If we had a magic wand to get to a deal with this parking problem, we would definitely wave that wand, but we don't. But in the process, the program you have put together ensures with conflict resolution, Ms. Natante and Ms. Schnettner, thank you so much, because I was observing you as the folks got up, and even though this is really not your problem, it seems like you really care about helping our Daly City residents address this problem. And I thank you so much for, for, for that. But in solving this problem, everybody comes with problems. But how are you going to solve a problem? Don't come to us with a problem unless you have a solution. And I think that's what this program is, is going to do. I've heard a lot of excellent ideas from the community, some things I did not even know about. What has happened before in the past, with, my feeling is, with this council, is what's happened before in the past. This is a new council up here, and we are addressing the problem. To ensure complete and full transparency to the community, that is why I support and appreciate the schedule that has been laid out. I have a saying, "You can't win if you don't play." In this particular case, if you don't participate, your voices will not be heard. But they will be heard this time, because every neighborhood will have an opportunity. My concern is when our staff puts together these meetings, I know it's going to be a difficult project for you to do, because not one all-size fits every community. Every community is different. I'm very concerned also about educating our constituents. I went to a town hall meeting about a year ago, and I asked them a question about parking, and you know, one of the citizens said to me, "I won't allow that, I won't allow that." But they didn't know that it is permissible within the law. Which brings me to another point. Somebody brought up earlier about enforcing the laws that we do have. That is very, very, very important. At times, we've turned our heads to the problem, because we know it exists a problem, and we don't really want to put a burden on our community. But eventually, that will have to change. I feel we should start enforcing the law, especially parking on sidewalks. I tell you what, if your car drips oil and I fall in front of your house, you'll find out about it. Shouldn't be parking on sidewalks. That is why I depend on our police department to provide full and complete transparency to our citizens, to let them know. Maybe they really don't know that you can do certain things and you cannot do certain things. That is very important. Houses as rooms, Airbnb. Well, you know Airbnb is a temporary thing, but you get new cars coming in all the time? Well, who owns the house? I feel that we should develop a placard program, and the owner who rents out that Airbnb home, you get two, two spots, and whoever is renting your home, this is just a suggestion, you got to display that placard. That's an excellent idea. Caregiving. Wow. The mayor is about to sign a letter to the World Health Organization and Daly City becoming a health and senior-friendly city. We didn't think about the fact about caregivers who come to the home. It does, if I was a caregiver, I wouldn't want to go move my car every two hours. We need to look at that as well. Social, social economics of households, every household is different. My feeling is, if you can afford a car, you can afford to pay the fine. I would like to see a study done comparable with other cities to see what the fines are. If San Francisco or San Bruno's charging $50 for overtime parking at a meter, and Daly City's only charging 10, we need to look into that as well. Fees for quantity. We believe in being fair. Most developments coming to Daly City, we have to ensure through our planning commission that there is enough parking. A single-family household, this is just me speaking now, shouldn't have seven cars. If you have two, we'll give you the first two free, but you're going to pay for three, four, five, six, and seven. It, it's good, this is a good idea, as I'm getting from everybody, and I love it, but you folks is the one that's headed. And if we have to enact something about, especially the, the parking permit per homes, because it came from you. And lastly, which upset me very much, I did not know about this commercial parking. Yes, we have to do something, either they have a spot for commercial parking, you only park there, and, and, and to move the cars with a 72-hour notice, I see that game played all the time. So it's a lot of food for thought. I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. We are moving in that direction, and rest assured, through the conflict resolution, we will hear you, and we'll take an active move towards trying to address the problem that we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, apologize for my tardiness. You know, when you have kids, wait for mom to come back home and watch the babies. But I got, I'm, I'm glad that I was able to kind of see parts of the presentation and seeing the community collaboration and people that have came and voiced out their opinions. I think in terms of the schedule, I think that's fair. Right? Because I, I think when we talk about putting together a plan, it has to be data-driven. We can't just base off something on, just go off of action without having something that's data-driven. And I think that's the reason we, we brought in Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center and the help of the staff to put that together. And that's important for me, because for me, I feel like we, we, we need to understand the flow of traffic, the flow of, of people coming in and out of the city. Another thing is about just giving permits to homeowners. I'm not a homeowner. Right? The, the skyrocketing rates of rent require people, multiple people living in one home. Right? And I've received tickets before for having multiple tickets. Like, you're already working already, you're already trying to make the rent, and then on top of that, you're going to get charged? And it's, we've got, and I think that's the reason why it's so important to study different cities, or even cities that are comparable to Daly City, and see what they're doing, and not try to reinvent, reinvent the wheel. So also, I think I mentioned this prior to as well, is that why not ask the police to give their input as well? They, they look at, they enforce the rules, they see what's going on on the everyday, they're on the ground. They, I would like to see what their input can be as well, to find some equitable solutions for providing some sort of action in terms of what can we do? Because I think the more people that we have in terms of understanding the dialogue and increasing the, the amount of people that can, that can provide their, their perspectives, then we can provide a specific approach or method for Daly City and within our context. So thanks again for everybody that came out, and thank you for the staff, and thank you for everybody that came to this, and hopefully we could come to a resolution about this.
Thank you, Dr. Roden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as far as the plan that we have, it is a more comprehensive approach. In the past, you could have had one meeting, received numerous comments, but this is another step towards really diving into the particular neighborhoods and areas in which we hear almost around the issue around parking. I know it's universal around the needs around parking. We've heard it from not only certain neighborhoods, but it's everywhere, but not every neighborhood has the same situation. And so what's important here is, I want to say thank you to the community members that spoke up today. It's really important to get your feedback. And I think that's why there is a continuity to getting more feedback from other members in the community, because you never know, there might be an idea that was not thought about. And if anything, you know, please tell others around the meetings that are coming down the line, and the meetings are happening within your communities, and so it's not here only at City Hall, so there's an approach to do so. And I think another piece is also looking at, like, creative solutions. We talked about, yes, permitting, and then also the, the red tip. So I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, of the ideas and concerns listed here, but this may not be all of them. I think the other piece is if there's an analysis also in seeing if there could be a private-public partnership around entities or parking lots near neighborhoods that have commercial lots. I don't know how feasible that is, but if you live near Lucky's, if you live near a Walgreens or a shopping center, that maybe there could be a relationship with a business owner to have people be able to have overflow parking there, but make sure they leave when it's business time. I don't know, the ideas like that. But I know we are a very dense community. This is an issue that comes along when we have so many people living in Daly City, which is a beautiful thing, because that's where we have, you know, so many diverse community, and, and really, that means a lot of people want to live in Daly City. But the, to resolve issues like this, it's really around working together. And I'm excited to see what will result in all of these continued conversations. But the, the piece about- But the, the piece about it is that there is a deadline to talk about action steps, right? So there is gonna be a time when we're gonna reflect back, gather the information, and then take what next, what are the next steps? What are the implementation steps around moving forward? So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, yes, I'd like to echo, excuse my throat tonight, but the community is most important for the community input, and that this timeline, although it seems long, it ensures the fact that we have over a hundred thousand people, and that as many people as we can, they're gonna try to reach in different manners. You know, not everybody has online, not everyone has certain ways, but they are gonna try to take different approaches to reach different age groups and, and ethnicities and languages, and it's, it's a big task. And I have to agree with the Vice Mayor, we are a different council, we are a council that have taken different actions already in our, in this, in the short time that we've been together. Maybe not, we're just doing the parking, but there is a timeline that will create the actions. I have a couple of things. I would like to know if they're gonna increase, and on analytical data, sometimes the patterns of Uber and Lyft on how they park in people's neighborhoods. Not the people that, that are working and have a home, but the people that are not, that are coming in their neighborhoods and spending the night, or, or parking their cars and throwing their trash out. Like, if we can do some kind of data on that. Another thing that I, that I believe that, council, excuse my throat, that our police assistants, we need to include them, and our police, as the council member said, because we need to figure out what type of tickets are the most type of tickets that they give out? What type of violations do they, do they most see when they're on the street? And we know now that we are short-staffed on our police assistants, and I know that the police themselves are really short-staffed, but our police assistants try to do the best they can in the neighborhoods. But because the past is the past, and looking into the future, if we, when we do come up with the solution, with the action, be it permits, or whatever the solution with the community's input, we may have to increase our staffing to monitor, to give those tickets out, to making sure that, that the ordinances are followed, maybe signage, there's gonna be different avenues, there are public works and, and police will be involved in, and the community is number one. The other thing I was thinking about is, yes, the Airbnb. That is something that I know in the future that we already have on the books, I believe it's in October, to look into an ordinance, on how we can finally have an ordinance on these short-term rentals to begin with. And so it kind of goes hand in hand together, because the Airbnbs, there are other names for them now, there's over a hundred different names for these types of businesses, and how they are in our neighborhoods daily, coming and going, cars, and I hear a lot of calls like that. So we need to keep this in mind when we get to our short-term rentals. And let's see, I believe there's a couple more things. And someone mentioned Task Force. In the past, we did, in different areas, a couple of the members, Ms. Lily Louise here tonight from Westlake, we had Task Force on some of the parking issues, and, and a different type of parking issue, I think it was the paving, correct? You know, pavers, thank you. And also, we do involve the community, and there will be representation, if that's what the community demands, that's what the community deserves, and that's what the community will get. Because it is driven, this city is driven by you, the community. We are just your worker bees, we are your servants, and we are here trying to figure out a solution together, and to let you know that that's why we're here. And I'd like to thank my fellow council members, because we are all interested in finding solutions, because we would like the quality of life for our residents and community members. So I'd like to thank Conflict Resolution, looking forward to it, and the staff, and especially the community members. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're all in align with the recommendations, unless I hear an objection, we'd ask that you move forward with all of them, including the community engagement, the online outreach, the neighborhood forums, and the, and the schedule timeline, okay?
Okay, thank you, we'll keep you updated.
Okay, so this meeting, this parking meeting is, is gonna be adjourned, but we're gonna have, rest assured you, more to come. And so thank you all for participating today, we're gonna adjourn for now, and we're gonna go on to our next meeting. Thank you.